I'd like to call the meeting of the City of Reno Planning Commission to order. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Dennis Romeo.
Present.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Buzz Harris.
Here.
Kimberly Locke.
Here.
Dagny Stapleton.
Here.
Kevin Wysocki.
Here.
I assume we have a quorum. Item three is public comment. I do have one public comment card. Ted Levatter. So regarding land use and zoning in Old Southwest, you have three minutes.
Thanks, sir. I'm here today to talk to the commission about a developing issue in Old Southwest Reno. In 1997, Our Lady of Snows asked for the abandonment of Lander Street for two reasons. One was for the protection of their children during the school day. The other reason was for the expansion of their capacity to double the size of students. That petition was declined in 1997. It was re-submitted again in 2001. This time it was only for, according to Our Lady of Snows, for the protection of the kids on Lander Street, even though in 1997 that protection was provided for by a Play Street designation. Part of the Lander Street abandonment comes with conditions. One of those conditions is the replacement of 17 parking places that will be lost by the neighborhood. On September 11th, or September 12th, the Neighborhood Advisory Board for Ward 1, a presentation was made by Our Lady of Snows regarding their plans to replace the 17 parking places. At that meeting, Our Lady of Snows representatives said that they did not have a plan at this time to replace those 17 parking places. I am concerned by the fact that I have found out since that meeting that Our Lady of Snows has been working for the last two months to purchase a property around the campus to tear down a single-family residence to put in a parking lot. You can see here by the diagram, the diagram is actually from Our Lady of Snows master plan. I'm not sure of the date of the master plan, and it is a little bit outdated. They don't have a current one, so it's the best I have right now. You can see Lander Street here. They're in the process of obtaining the west side, and they've already stated they would like the east side of Lander Street as well. They own all four of these properties on Wright Street already, and they have plans to tear that down to put in more facilities for their children. They also own this corner house here already, purchased in the last couple of months, and this location here is the property where they're looking to put the parking lot. My concern is at the NAB during this presentation, they did not disclose that this was a plan, and I don't believe that at any time where any of the abandonment conditions is going to come before the planning commission. I believe that the abandonment of Lander Street has to do with the expansion of Our Lady of Snows. The Plumas Neighborhood Plan protects the area around Our Lady of Snows with strict zoning laws. It doesn't appear to me that Our Lady of Snows is interested in dealing with those zoning laws and we're looking for a way to work around them. I'm asking for this commission's help to figure out what is happening here and what type of zoning requirements would be allowed by the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, and what would Our Lady of Snows have to do to be putting in commercial-use properties? Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to take questions.
This is public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda? Last opportunity. Seeing none, I will close that portion. At this time, I would like to announce that item seven on our agenda, LDC 13-00014, Wells Avenue Neighborhood Conservation District, it will be postponed till October 17th, 2012. That is due to a noticing error. So if you're here on that item, if you'd like to give an input card, you're welcome to do so or come back on the 17th when we will have that public hearing. Also, I'd like to welcome new commissioner, Kimberly Locke. I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission. It's your first meeting. If you'd like to tell us where you're from, Neighborhood Advisory Boards or whatever, little history, then now would be the time.
Thank you. Well, let's see. I grew up in Carson City. I'm a native Nevadan. I've lived in Reno for, seems like forever, but about 15 years. My background is actually in writing and rhetorical positing, rhetoric and things. I don't have any current experience on committees or commissions. This is my first time.
We will be gentle with you. Welcome to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes of the July 25, 2012 workshop and September 5, 2012 regular meeting. We'll take these as separate items. Do we have a motion to accept the July 25 workshop minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Wysocki. Second by Commissioner Kaufman.
And one abstained as well.
Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? How about abstentions?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris.
Jason Woosley.
Kimberly Locke.
So we have four, three, so we're good. Okay, let the record show, it's approved four to three. The minutes of the September 5, 2012 meeting, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I will second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harris. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any abstentions?
Commissioner Stapleton abstains.
Commissioner Kaufman abstains.
Kimberly Locke abstains.
So we have four in favor, three abstaining. The motion does carry. Item five, City Council liaison reports. None. We have none. We're going to go on to public hearings. Item six, first public hearing, LDC 13-00020, Anytime Fitness in North Town. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative here? Could you please come forward and plead your case? You have 15 minutes. You don't have to use them all, by the way.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I stand before you tonight. My name's John Fink with Anytime Fitness. Anytime Fitness is a 24-hour coed private health club, independently owned and operated franchise throughout the United States. Currently, there are five open locations within the city of Reno, two additional, one in Sparks and one in Spanish Springs. I come before you tonight applying and requesting for a 24-hour special use permit for a physical location at 2881 North Town Lane, cross of McCarran, in the southeast shopping plaza of the four corners, North Town and McCarran. Currently, that shopping plaza has a 24-hour WinCo, Party City, GNC, Subway, and a few other retail shops. There are some other 24-hour facilities in those four corners. Again, I'm with Anytime Fitness, a 24-hour private health club, and that's what I'm here for. I don't think I'm going to need all 15 minutes.
Thank you for being brief. Who's representing the city on this case?
Good evening, Commissioners. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff can make all the applicable findings. As the applicant mentioned, there are numerous 24-hour operations within the center currently. Residential zoning is over 500 feet to the east. We don't believe that the 24-hour operation would have any significant impact. We did receive one phone call. It was from an adjacent property owner who was concerned, not with this project, but with trash from the surrounding businesses, and we discussed that having this suite occupied would probably help with that, and it not being a retailer/restaurant use would not compound that problem. If you have any questions, I'll be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing none, close the public hearing portion, bring it back to the Commissioners for questions and comments. Commissioner Woosley.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
There being no further comments, go ahead.
In case number LDC 130020, Anytime Fitness, North Town, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can make finding A, I think it's completely compatible with the surrounding area.
Thank you, Commissioner Woosley. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wysocki. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Next item, item two, LDC 13-00017, The Cottages at Brighton Park. The owner or the owner's representative here, please identify yourself. You have 15 minutes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Andy Derling with Wood Rogers, representing The Cottages at Brighton Park. This is a request for a 55-lot tentative map. The project is located at the northwest corner of Moana Lane and Plumas. It's within the Brighton Manor SPD. The original SPD had a tentative map for 40 lots. Forty of those were developed, 38 of the homes were actually constructed. Two of the lots were dedicated to the parking lot for the model complex. Requested at this time, as I said, is 55-lot tentative map, bringing the total number of units within Brighton Manor SPD to 93 units. The SPD currently allows for 129 units. The previous approval for this portion, this Phase II portion of the SPD, included attached units, which warranted the larger number of allowed units. Proposed at this time is more traditional lots rather than the attached units, or as are in Phase 1, more of a neo-traditional design with the garage on one side of the unit and the front door on the opposite side of the unit. The traditional lots that are proposed at this time far exceed the setback standards that are provided in the handbook. We looked at a few differing issues with the different type of product, and one of those issues is landscaping. With the first phase being more of the neo-traditional design, the front doors, if you will, opened up to common area. This being more traditional with the garage and front door both facing the street, it was not an accurate apples-to-apples comparison to say that the landscaping could be compared in that way. So we went through an analysis and found that the common area of Phase 1 actually included the front yards and rear yards of the Phase 1 units. So we did a similar comparison to get that apples-to-apples comparison, and the landscaping far exceeds that, which is identified in your staff report. Parking in the SPD is required at three unit, or three parking spaces per unit. The newly proposed Phase 2 provides a two-car garage and a two-car driveway, so there's that, four parking spaces per unit. With the submittal, we actually included another seven parking spaces, more for convenience since there's no on-street parking for guests. Through discussions with HOA for Phase 1, we identified that parking was an issue for them, and in response to their concerns, we added an additional nine parking spaces to bring the total off-street parking for guests up to 16. The architecture that's proposed at this time is different and, but complimentary at the same time. The original development had more primary colors and things like that incorporated into what would be considered more of a San Francisco Victorian-style home. We do have some Victorian-style architecture, but in more muted colors, more earth-toned colors. This was also something we discussed with the HOA, and not to put words in their mouth, but they felt that it was complimentary. Additionally, being that the original Phase 1 included ample pedestrian pathways through the common area, we did include a pedestrian path through the center of the complex to pull everything together from a pedestrian amenity standpoint and feel that it is consistent with the SPD handbook. Like I said, we did meet with the HOA, and a few of their members are here in the audience this evening. They are in support of the project based on the changes that we were able to make relative to parking and some conditions that are in the staff report relative to hydrology. With that, we are in agreement with the staff's recommendations and conditions and would be happy to reserve our time for questions.
Thank you. Vern, for the City of Reno.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. Mr. Derling gave a fairly accurate overview of the project. The issues that staff had concerns with were related to parking and landscaping and architecture, and we did discuss all those issues with the applicant before they submitted it, and of course during the processing of the application. With regard to the existing HOA, I did speak with the representative from the association, and the addition of, or providing 16 off-street spaces and dealing with the existing hydrology report adequately addressed their concerns, and they are here to, I believe, make that statement. They've also, I don't know if they provided you with a written statement, but I have that with me. Also, I received an email from a Mr. O'Gorman who lives to the south across Moana Lane. I believe you, the Planning Commission, got copies of that. I emailed it to you, I believe, and I also provided copy for you at the table. But the gist of that is he was concerned about the days and hours of construction operation, which are already addressed in the SPD standards, which are more restrictive than what he wanted to occur, and then, which was 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and the hours are a little bit less than that, and no Sunday operations. And he was also concerned about radios during construction, and that's also addressed in the SPD standards. This was reviewed by the NAB. You have copies of their comments in your report. Staff is recommending approval. We can make all the findings, and I'll be happy to answer questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Before I get further into the public hearing, are there any disclosures on this issue? Commissioner Wysocki?
Thank you. I need to disclose that in early 2000, when this project was first being proposed, I was sitting on the Ward 2 NAB and heard this proposal. Not this proposal's being presented to us today, but the one that was started in earlier phases. I have checked with our city attorney's office and have no preset thoughts on this project, so there's no reason for me to do anything but disclose. And I also received an email on this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Stapleton. Commissioner Harris.
I just, I received an email on this.
Commissioner Woosley.
Email as well.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I received an email also.
Commissioner Locke. As did I.
I received the same email from Mr. O'Gorman that we talked about later, earlier. I received it from staff, so I will disclose that.
Thank you. Okay, getting on with the public hearing. I have one request to speak from Newt Crumley, 3285 Covent Garden Drive. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you. That is I. As you pointed out, my name is Newt Crumley, and I represent the Brighton Manor Homeowners' Association Board of Directors. The members of the board are here, and we would like to indicate that the developers and architects have been very responsive in addressing our concerns. We find that their solutions are more than adequate, and we would like to endorse this project wholeheartedly. You have before you a little statement of mine and of the Planning Commission, or the, excuse me, the planner as well, where they expanded the parking and are willing to address the hydrology issues, and those were our two primary concerns, and I would like to reiterate that they are very responsive, and we look forward to working with them. So we endorse the project completely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion, bring it back to the board for questions and comments, or possibly a motion. Commissioner Kaufman.
Nobody has comments. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map, subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Stapleton, I can second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Let the record show, the vote is seven to zero in favor. Good luck with your project. Item three, LDC 13-00022, Golden Valley Industrial Park. It's the applicant or the applicant's representative here. You have 15 minutes, sir. Please identify yourself for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, for the record, Jeff Cadega with Cadega Concepts. And it's really been a while since I've been here, so it's good to see you all. You'll be glad to know I won't be used anywhere near 15 minutes. Basically, what this is, this is a change to the zoning, or to the sign standards that are contained within the Golden Valley Industrial Park. Golden Valley Industrial Park was actually approved as an SPD in 1995. At that time, the city had no sign standards or, you know, regulating the sizes and configuration of signs anywhere in the community. And at that time, I think generally, you know, smaller signs was thought to be a better sign. In this case, if this was to be built today under current industrial standards, we actually would be allowed 1,000 square feet of building signage and 160 square feet of directional signage, and those are the two principal components along with lighting. What we're proposing is 200 square feet of building signage, far less than the 1,000 that would be allowed, and 100 square feet of directional signage. And just to show you where these signs go, it's a little hard to see, but this is along the railroad tracks and the freeways right in here, and this little pop-out right here will actually get this sign, which will be the illuminated sign, which is only visible from the freeway, indirectly illuminated, channel letters like you'll see in most shopping centers and that sort of thing. There was one comment at the Neighborhood Advisory Board about light pollution, but these kind of lights don't emit light off-site. It literally is confined to the sign face itself. And then we have a smaller sign to go on the, on the front of the building, and then this is the directional signage. Basically, you know, I think all the findings are in order and that sort of thing, and this really is kind of a housekeeping item. Interesting to note, US Foods is a national company. I think it's actually good to actually have that presence, and that presence even lit at night, so you can see a national Fortune 100 company in the community. I think it does help our branding in the community. And this is all part of a branding scheme that US Foods is doing, and the interesting thing is that out of all the places they do business in the United States, this is the only one they had to get some special dispensation. But again, I think that reflects the age of the old sign standards that were prepared in 1995. With that, I'll conclude my remarks and be pleased to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Nathan, are you up on this one for the City of Reno?
Yes, indeed. Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Staff concurs with Mr. Cadega's representation of the project. This is a minor special planning district amendment. Were standard industrial codes being applied, the signage would be substantially increased from what the modest bit that they're proposing here. Staff can make the applicable findings.
Thank you, Nathan. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Now is your chance. Hearing and seeing none, I will close that portion. Bring it back to the Commissioners for questions, comments. That was Jeff.
Oh, it was? Okay.
Okay. Questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay. Start with Commissioner Stapleton.
Sorry. Did you have a question? Okay. A question for Nate. Just, it makes sense, the updating this to what the current, you know, industrial standards would be in other districts. Just a question, though, this is from the handbook from 1995, right? Is that, I know that's what Jeff said. Just wondering if these were so much less because the neighborhood had concerns about dark skies or anything like that, or was it just that there was less development at that time out in this part of town, or just wondering what the background is, why these are so low, why these were so low originally?
From what I understand, the concepts during that time were a lot different than the current standards that we have now. I think Mr. Cadega could flee one with the history. He was the original representative for this handbook. If you wanted some background history from 1993, I believe is when it was adopted.
Okay.
I can jump in there also. Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. We didn't have much of a sign code back then. I think we had signs for industrial, no, it wasn't industrial district. Actually, I'm not sure if we had any sign standards back then. So we would condition it per project, per PUD. It would come in, and we'd look at it a case-by-case basis in most situations.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Woosley, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Staff. Nathan, going along with the same question, in fact, I had a similar question. I mean, there is a concern for dark skies out there, and I understand this was, a normal industrial would be 1,000 square foot. This is being requested for 200, and it's 100 now. Is that correct?
Correct.
In your opinion, obviously, you don't feel that with the directionality with this facing the freeway and all that, that this is going to impact the dark skies out there, or kind of the normal intent of most of the projects and feedback we hear?
Our opinion is this is rather subdued. We, the comments, there was one concern from the Neighborhood Advisory Board, but the rest of the NAB members, the North Valleys NAB, all supported. You had two written comments. I spoke with the chair, and the rest were all in support. We didn't receive any comments, inquiries, concerns from the community, from public notice.
I asked a bit around, you know, our community, and the only concern was, is would you be able to see this from across the freeway at night? You know, is it going to be tall and bright and all that? And several of the signs, I could tell where they were, but there was one that I was concerned about, but I wasn't really sure where that was, was trying to place it. And you're saying you're comfortable with all of those signs and the placement and have no concerns whatsoever?
I don't have concerns. Well, what they proposed in that was in your packet, is they're not beholden to that. Their request is to amend the handbook to allow up to within the standards in that handbook specific to that parcel. I can't see why they would not do anything other than that. With those standards, I'm comfortable personally with them, that they would, they are benign enough for the impacts for night sky.
Great. That's what I need to hear. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Comments? Motion?
If I could further clarify on that, there were, Mr. Cadega did make comment on the tenant and the sign that is proposed in this area. I just want to remind the commission that we are reviewing it for standards, for height, lighting, and size. We do not look at copy or content of the sign.
Thank you, Claudia. Once again, are there any further questions? Comments? Motion? Commissioner Stapleton.
In the case of LDC 13-00022, Golden Valley Industrial, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the amendment to modify the SPD by ordinance, subject to condition A as written below.
Can you make the findings?
Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I had that in my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Second from Commissioner Locke. The first second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that the motion carries seven to zero. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Next up, item four, LDC 13-00018, Demontie Ranch Village 10A. The applicant or the applicant's representative present? Please come forward. You have 15 minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. It won't take nearly that long. We are just fine with the staff's conditions as presented. We look forward to the opportunity to move this project ahead.
Just, for the record, could you?
I'm sorry, Perry DiLoreto, for the record. I apologize. I'd be happy to ask if there are any questions that anyone has, but we are in total agreement with the conditions as presented.
Thank you, Perry. Who's handling this for the city? Nathan, again?
Good evening again, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. As with the conditions add- As with the conditions added, staff can make the applicable findings and support the project as presented. We, we did hear one inquiry from a resident who was concerned with the impacts to schools. As noted in your staff report, the school district is, for elementary-age students, any, any students that would likely result from this tentative map, once homes are finally built, would either be bused or housed at, with the trailers at the existing elementary schools. She had concerns with that and spoke with Mike Boster at the school district. Believe she came to resolve, as I don't believe she's here this evening, but did want to share that comment. The staff, as with the conditions proposed, can make the applicable findings and recommends approval.
Thank you, Nathan. This is a public hearing. Before I go further into this, do we have any disclosures? Commissioners? None? Thank you. We have one request to speak. Melanie Stewart?
Hey, I'm here.
Please come forward. Identify yourself for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay. As a property owner in Saddle Ridge, as well as owning a home in Willow Creek and Demontie Ranch, I would like to address some concerns I have with the proposal. First, after reviewing the staff plan, I contacted the Capital Improvements Department at Washoe County School District. They indicated that the impact number provided, ten to fifteen students may not be accurate, and a more stringent review of the area's demographic trends should be done. A large number of families find the Demontie Ranch area desirable for its park schools in vicinity to the South Meadows Professional area. I have communicated with local property management professionals, and they often place families in rental homes in the Demontie Ranch area because it is desirable to have their children zoned for schools in that location. Thus, it is an extremely high-impacted area, and adding forty-six homes is likely to cause an additional burden on a school district that is extremely underfunded, often by forcing expensive alternatives like busing students to Pleasant Valley Elementary. Regardless, the negative consequences additional homes have in an area zoned for impacted schools should be of utmost consideration when planning for a large number of new homes. While resolutions to this overcrowding are discussed and planned, no funding has been secured to ease this overcrowding. Second, the area proposed generally has a reasonably light vehicle traffic, uh, traffical, traffic, and therefore is a safe haven for horses, along with a nearby pond they use as a water source. I fear that the safety of both the future homeowners as well as the horses will be impacted by the high density of homes being added to this two-lane road unless it is addressed. Third, the traffic circle inside the gates will likely need to be redesigned, since the gate will not allow a reasonable flow of vehicles. Who will be responsible for incurring this cost? As poor design should not be a cost absorbed by current Saddle Ridge owners. Fourth, homeowners that purchased from Toll Brothers were told that the community would offer homes of equal value. However, it appears that the lot sizes have been significantly reduced and therefore will include smaller homes that are not consistent with the current Saddle Ridge development, as well as add more homes in an area of town that has a glut of short sales and foreclosures. This glut lowers the value of homes for homeowners. Homeowners need time to evaluate the plan and be given an opportunity to voice their concerns. A couple of inhibiting factors to that. Toll Brothers indicated that I should review the public offering statement to confirm that the proposal does indeed meet that statement. However, Toll Brothers does not perfectly, does not currently have a public offering statement available for my review. So therefore, I cannot verify that, that everything is correct. Also, I received a postcard communication about the request last Thursday and called the planning office on Friday. My call was returned on Monday. This is a very limited amount of time for anyone to do any due diligence. So therefore, I believe that, that the parties affected, homeowners, wildlife organizations, Washoe County School District, should be given ample opportunity to engage in due diligence and respond to this request. Less than a week does not provide ample time for most private parties. For that reason, I kindly request that the commission members table this item until the above issues can be addressed. I'm sorry for the speed reading when I did it at home. Didn't make it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Bring it back to the board for questions. Comments? Motion? Commissioner Harris?
I just have a comment. I mean, in looking at this, it was good to see the comment, all favorable comments and good discussion that came out of the neighborhood advisory board. And, you know, I think that the neighborhood is appreciative of something that's going to be going on, an area that's been, you know, discussed for quite some time. So I thought, I thought I was very positive to see that there was neighborhood involvement for this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Kaufman?
Yeah, I, I guess I have a comment kind of to go along with Buzz's is that this project was already approved. It's now just bringing the tentative map, and that's what our meeting is for, is the tentative map. But as far as, you know, the homes being built, that type of thing, that was already approved prior. So it's just the developer bringing the tentative map going forward with this project, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I guess I have a question for Nate. I know you went over the impact on schools in your, your introduction, and just to address the member of the public's concern, because I know even though that, that it's already been approved, that this is one of our findings, that we have to consider the availability and accessibility of public services such as schools. So because the staff report does indicate that this will provide an additional stress on existing schools, what's the course forward on this? Is this, you know, the school district, knowing that this is approved, puts a plan in place? What happens so that we can make this finding?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, and I spoke with Mike Boster at length this morning, just to follow up with Ms. Stewart's concern. Basically, I mean, it is, it's not ideal in that, are they going to bus students possibly? Or would they have to have a portable classroom? But that is the school district's way to manage capacity. I think the, the, the short end of it is that they, they do have room. They can handle the students from the school district's perspective. And that's, I, I think, can, can it be handled, can it be managed, yes, for, for elementary school? That's the, the statement I received this morning from Mike Boster.
So, just to follow up. It says in the staff report, the school district indicates that students would likely be bused to nearby facilities until a new elementary school is built. Are there plans for a new elementary school?
My understanding is that there's currently two sites, but there's no, currently no elementary school funding at this time, and that's what they're, they're working on. And in the meantime, the contingency is, is to either add modular classrooms or to bus. And that's, that's, I guess, to reiterate, the, the school district did not have any opposition to this or, or did not feel that they, they couldn't handle the capacity. So from the comments from the school district, the, the, it wouldn't have a significant impact.
They said it wouldn't have, that they would handle it?
That they would handle it in either of those two ways.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Can we have a motion? Commissioner Locke?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Regarding case number LDC thirteen dash zero 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 one-eight, Demontie Ranch Village, A, ten A. I move to approve the tentative map based on compliance with the applicable findings and subject to conditions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, and I can make the findings.
We have a second by Commissioner Wiskey. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations on your first motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? This is Rob Boni with the City Attorney's Office. Could you read the appeal?
Good luck with your project.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, could you read the appeal process?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance, or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must make his or her its own appeal. Appeals may be filed or must be filed with the city clerk within ten days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission recommendations. That is the official reading of the appeal process. Next item, LDC thirteen dash zero 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 one-six, the human being condition amendment. The owner or the owner's rep present? You have fifteen minutes.
All right. Good evening. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group. We are requesting the addition of a small drive-through coffee kiosk within an existing commercial center. That is, let's see. That's an aerial view of the, of the commercial center. That's Longley Lane running north and south here, McCarran at the bottom. We're proposing a five-hundred-square-foot building for this southwest corner here. It's, it's a very small drive-through building. This is an existing site. We think it's an appropriate installation at that site. It kind of rounds out that corner, and it attracts existing commuters that are already using that area. We're unlikely to generate brand-new trips with this. We're likely just to divert people that are already on McCarran into the center, get a cup of coffee, and off they go. There's currently a parking surplus at this center. We're, we're slightly exceed code in our, our average parking rate, so there won't be really a parking impact there. And also, it's a drive-through facility, so parking could be very close to zero in any case. And that's, it's a simple project, and that's the whole presentation. I'll be happy to elaborate if needed.
Thank you. For the city, our intern, please identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. Lauren Barrera, Planning Intern. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation. We can make all the applicable findings and recommend approval. I'm also available for questions.
Thank you. Before we get any further into this, do we have any disclosures? I, I actually have one for me. I've been working on another part of this project through the Water Purveyor, but I have no interest in what they're doing whatsoever. I know that's a little bit complicated, but I just discovered tonight that this was on, this was going to be coming before us.
Okay, no financial impact or benefit to you?
None whatsoever.
Thank you for disclosing. I think you can remain.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the commission. Any questions, comments, motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wiskey?
I have a question for staff, please. Lauren, in your analysis, you discussed the parking, and the applicant's representative discussed the parking. Have you verified that the parking does exceed current code? And even with the deletion of the parking that's being proposed, that the shopping center based on its occupancy and square footage meets current code?
Yes, I have. The building's square footage is approximately fifty-two thousand square feet. And for a standard commercial center, a parking rate of one parking space per two hundred, two hundred and twenty square feet is used. And with the building's square feet, square footage and the reduction of the two parking spaces, they're left at two hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces, which equals a parking ratio of one space per two hundred and nineteen square feet of building space.
Thank you. No further questions. Mr. Chairman?
Any other commissioners? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wiskey?
In the case of LDC one-three dash zero 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 one-six, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the amendment to condition number one for LDC zero-four dash zero zero one-one-seven. That's ATM dash thirty-nine seventy-nine, South McCarran. An add condition number five is written in this memo, and I can make all of the findings.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. I can make all the findings also.
We have a second from Commissioner Kaufman. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carried seven to zero. Next item on our agenda, item six, LDC thirteen dash zero 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 two-one, Leather Lane Major Drainage Way. Would you please identify yourself for the record?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Andrew Mottar. I'm with Summit Engineering. I'm here representing Mr. William Martison in his application for a special use permit for disturbance in a major drainage way. We are requesting to construct a culvert in a drainage way along the extension of Leather Lane, which would serve as access to his parcel and residence. A little background on the project. In two thousand and seven, the previous property owner submitted permit applications for the construction of a home. It's a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot home on a twenty-four-acre parcel. And during that process, that property owner installed a five-by-eleven box culvert in the drainage way. It was later determined that that box culvert required a special use permit that was not acquired by the prior property owner. In meeting with staff after he acquired the parcel in February of this year, Mr. Martison discovered the need for the permit, and staff asked that he analyzed the existing box culvert to, to see if it was large enough to handle the drainage in that drainage way. Summit Engineering did a hydrologic analysis and determined that the box was not sufficient, that an additional five-by-eleven box culvert would be necessary to handle the flow at that portion in the drainage way. So what you're seeing here tonight is there's an existing box culvert here. We're adding one immediately adjacent to it, same size, that is sufficient to pass a hundred percent of the flow in a hundred-year storm event, which brings that drainage crossing up to city standards. So with that, I will end my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Vern, you're handling this one for the city?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. This particular drainage way request is relatively minor. All the findings that are necessary for a major drainage way special use can be made in staff's opinion. The area of disturbance is relatively small, even if you take into account the previous culvert that was put in. Basically, there's a roadway, and you put the culvert in, and there's about two hundred, two hundred and twenty square feet of disturbance to the drainage way. There's really no vegetation or impact on the drainage way other than allowing it to function in accordance with code as far as passing the water. And the conditions and standards and code will require them to re-vegetate and armor both sides of the culvert to city standards so that erosion is addressed, and there's really no effect on vegetation or wildlife, forage, those sorts of things. So with that, staff is recommending approval, as we believe we can make all the findings. I did receive one phone call from a lady that lived in the Mobile Home Park to the northeast, and she was mainly concerned about any effects on their well, which this should not have any effect on their well. And those were the only comments that I received. Thank you.
And just to add a little bit to that, once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. In your staff report, you'll see that there are two sets of findings that you need to be reviewing for this, the standard special use permit findings, and then the disturbance for the major drainage way.
Thank you, Claudia. Do we have any disclosures on this item? Seeing none. This is a public hearing. Does anyone from in the audience wish to speak on this item? Now is your opportunity. Hearing and seeing none, I will close that portion and bring it back to the commissioners for questions and comments or possible motion. Commissioners? Motion? Commissioner Kaufman?
In the case of LDC one-three dash zero 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 two-one, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject conditions, and I can make all the findings. And that would be for the, just the general special use permit.
And we have?
I was going to do them separate. Do you want me to do them together?
No, you can do the same motion. You just need to address both sets of findings.
And, and special use permit for disturbance of the major drainway.
And we have a motion? And we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Woosley?
I can second that and make the findings.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda, LDC thirteen dash zero 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 one four has been rescheduled for two weeks from tonight. Correct? Okay. Item eight, TXT thirteen dash zero 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 three, accessory automobile rental use.
Good evening again, Lauren Barrera, Planning Intern. Tonight, I will be discussing accessory automobile rental use in conjunction with automobile sales. Automobile dealerships are requesting that they be allowed to have on-premise accessory automobile rental operations. As it is now, the Annexation and Land Development Code does not allow for accessory automobile rental use except for in the Hotel Casino Zoning District. The Hotel Casino Zoning District is only located in the Verde area and is not seen anywhere else in the city of Reno. The sales and rental of automobiles are similar land uses, therefore, the impacts on the surrounding area and the demands from city services will be nearly the same. This amendment will allow for automobile rental use, that is accessory to automobile sales, in all zoning districts within the city. This concludes my presentation and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Stapleton?
I have a question. Um, you said that the, the, currently where this is an allowed use is only in the, um, the Verde area? Was this?
As an accessory use.
Oh, okay.
It's only allowed in the Verde, in the Hotel Casino's zoning district, which is in the Verde area.
Okay. But it's, it is involved, it is allowed in other, isn't it involved in, isn't it allowed in industrial, where there are current rental car agencies?
Permitted outright by itself. It is allowed in, I believe, industrial, commercial, it's allowed, but as an accessory use to something else, it's not.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion? Commissioner Stapleton?
Uh, and the, um, I can make all the, the findings for this. Um, I guess I can make all the considerations in changing the code on this topic. And, uh, so in the case of, so I'd like to make a motion in the case of, uh, TXT thirteen dash zero 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 three, accessory automobile rental use, um, based on compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Harris?
I can second that and make the findings as well.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries seven to zero. Good luck. Item seven, Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Commissioner Wieske, do you have anything to report on this?
We had a very brief meeting last week and, um, we don't have another meeting until November.
Very good. Staff announcements, Claudia?
Um, the only thing I have tonight, um, we had a very light agenda at City Council, so I don't have anything to report from there. Um, but you're, uh, you do have a meeting, workshop meeting, and it'll also be a public hearing for a couple of cases on October seventeenth. Um, it'll be at six o'clock in the caucus room upstairs on floor, upstairs on floor seven.
For the workshop or for the workshop and meeting?
Both.
Okay. And has everyone gotten with Claudia?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on this item?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, Claudia told me earlier that the workshop is gonna be on Todd's?
Yes.
And so, just, can you give us a quick synopsis of where we're at with that and what we'll be talking about on the workshop?
I'm gonna be coming back with, um, more refinement to the ordinance that we've had. I've brought you, um, draft ordinances in the past and, um, maps. I hope to have revised maps and actual strike-through versions, um, an underlying version of the ordinance with suggestions. By no means is it a final draft. You, it's, it's for more discussion and more comment, um, but it'll give you an idea of what, what it looks like at this point.
Okay. Mr. Chair, one more question.
Go ahead.
Um, are you doing the same thing where you're inviting stakeholders and, or are we sort of beyond that?
Yes, we, um, I will invite those that have been, um, involved in the past workshops. Um, I have also been asked to invite the, um, the candidates for, um, City Council and, um, the, um, Building Enterprise Financial Advisory Committee.
Are we gonna have enough room in the upstairs conference room if they all show?
I, I will have enough room. Yes.
Claudia promises we will have enough room. And if someone has to leave, I'll voluntarily vacate my chair. Commissioners, suggestions for future agenda items?
I have, I have two thoughts and comments, and I might do one during public comment, but just, uh, the, uh, public comment that we had at the beginning of the meeting about the, um, Our La, is it Our Lady of Snows? Is that the church?
Yes.
That's something that's sort of beyond our purview unless there's a case that's before us, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna make a comment that it's not just a church, it's a, it's a school. So, um, you just said it was a church, but it's, it's a school and a church, both together.
Right. Yeah.
Commissioner Stapleton, can I ask a question on that? So, um, Claudia, do, we typically at planning commission level don't see abandonments, do we?
No, we don't see abandonment in City Council.
At planning council level?
At planning commission, it's only, yes, they go directly to City Council.
So, really, i- in case of the abandonments, um, we would never see them, we would never know about them. Hopefully, the gentleman that was here will get that information at some point, that he needs to sit down with his, uh, councilperson, whoever, whoever represents him and, and start working with that councilperson.
Yes, and staff has met with him before and we will continue to meet with him.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe if you could pass on that suggestion?
Sure.
From Commissioner Wieske?
Mm-hmm.
If you don't mind, thank you.
Will do.
Cause that's good, for him to contact his councilperson, maybe get some help there.
Okay, item ten, public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items contained in this agenda. I see the entire audience is left, so I'm assuming there'll be no one there. I will.
Can I make one comment?
Comment?
Go ahead, Commissioner Kaufman.
I think Kim did a great job tonight for the first time on the, sitting on the commission.
And, and I think her first motion was a good motion, by the way.
And her second motion was her first.
Well, the first second was a good second and the first first was... Commissioner Stapleton?
Um, and I just wanted to make a comment and say, have a thought, uh, and I don't know if this is something we should discuss, about the motion process and, and about making sure we're discussing the findings. And I just wanted to say that I do think it's really important for the process, you know, especially to show the public that when we are, um, deciding on a, on an item, especially if it's something that there's been public comment about or concerns about, that, um, maybe during discussion or sometimes we can make a motion and then have discussion and that that might be a good time, or maybe before we're making the motions, just to make sure, um, Doug did this with the motion, um, on the accessory rental car. Um, just to make sure that we are sort of making clear, you know, how we've come to our decision and that we can make the findings. Um, and I know this is annoying, but when, when I make a motion, I always, the motion says, "Based on compliance with the applicable findings," and so I figure that it's in there already and I'm, I get irritated about grammar, so I don't say it twice then at the end. I don't, I don't say again. So, do I need to say that, you know, twice, or can we just say, could we, could we sort of make sure that we are, you know, ex, you know, expressing why we can make the findings and then in the motion just, just say that, you know, does "based on compliance with the applicable findings" cover it?
The motion is written is typically fine. If you feel you need to expand on one to make a specific point, then you have the ability to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
And I believe.
I want to explain myself too, so it's not, cause I know the, the chair said.
You know, I, I think that part of that came up with legal wanting us to say we can make the, all the findings. I mean, the, part of that, you know, comes from legal, even though it's written and how it's written, but I, I know when Marilyn sat there, uh, there's many times through the years she's asked us, you know, "And can you make the find?" You know? So, I think that's just an added thing that, that we do need to say, just to put it on the record.
Yeah, and I think.
So, it's very clear.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, both for the process as well as to cover ourselves legally, that we have it on the record.
And, and I think that's why it's written the way it is, that over the last seven and a half years that I've been involved here, initially commissioners were making motions that I approve TXT thirteen dash zero 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 three and adding very little else. I think through legal and the process, that the motions, the way they're written now and the staff reports meet those, meet those requirements. I'm seeing the nodding of the head there from legal, so.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's true. And I also have been taken to task many times by Marilyn and legal when we opposed an issue, that we should always state what finding, for what reason, if it's A, B, C, or D, and what reason we have for not making that. But that's specific to opposing a motion or voting against that, saying we can't make that finding and putting it on record. We do that at regional planning also. That's part of the step that we do at regional planning, is we explain what finding we can't make at that point. So, um, I, I think the motions are written well. So far, we haven't had any in a while that have been very contentious, but if we ever do get those again, um, that's where we're gonna have to be very careful on explaining why we're voting no for something or why we're not, not approving an, an item, especially if staff has written, written a recommendation for approval.
Cool. Thank you for the discussion, the clarification.
Sure. Okay, motion to adjourn? Anyone?
I move that we adjourn this fine meeting today.
And we are?
I will make a second.
Adjourned.